Please be seated.
Oh, what am I doing?
We're here. Please rise and raise the flag.
Mayor, mayor, let me read the call first.
Oh, your call, please.
Notice of public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Title 5 of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act notices hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a regular meeting on Tuesday, May the 3rd, 2011, at 6:00 PM in the Commission Chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building, located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas.
Thank you. Please face the flag.
The leaders to the flag. United States of America. To the Republic of which we stand. One nation under God. Indivisible, free, liberty, and justice for all. Honor Texas flag. A pledge against the enemy. Texas, one state under God. One indivisible.
We have the pastor here from the Word of God in mouth of glory, Desmond Nakita Jr., who was also his father as a fire chief at one time. Our change, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Please leave us some work there.
Yes. The Word of God says, "The Lord has showed you, O man, what is good. What does he require of thee? But to do justice, love mercy, and walk humbly before your God." Father, we appreciate the burdens that these men and women carry on their shoulders as they lead us, Lord, in peace and in service in our community. Father, I pray that your Spirit would be with them tonight as they discuss the things that are on the agenda and they contemplate the decisions, Lord, that must be made in the future. Lord, I pray for the citizens of our community, Lord. I pray that they would appreciate, Father, the burden and the responsibility that the leadership have on their shoulders to conduct business. Father, and I pray, God, as they walk through this time together in the seasons that they are serving and the positions that they are in, Lord, I pray that they would always do justice. I pray that they'd always love mercy. And I would also pray, Father, ultimately, that they would walk humbly before you. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Please be seated. It's nice to see you. A well-attended meeting. Please sit down. Find a place to sit and sit. Just find your room over here. And as we go through the meeting, I hope everybody keeps their voices down, all their telephones off, please. And during the public meeting, I hope everybody keeps from talking out loud and let the speaker speak. Okay, we're gonna go to the mayor's report. If you put a... This is a presentation that I've been working on. It's called a buyout proposal. And it has to do with our finances with the city. We've been having budget problems for the past four years. This is only a concept that's being proposed that it can be worked with if it's found to be feasible and doable. The purpose of this presentation is to get people to think that what we have to do to start cutting costs, start cutting costs to balance our budget, which we've been having a difficult time for the past four years, or five, six years, I would say. Let me turn this off. Okay. We'll start off with the first slide. First slide. Okay, the City of Brownsville is faced with a serious budget crisis which has hindered the potential of our city as a whole. Serious considerations and decisions must be made to control and ultimately save capital for future improvement and growth. I propose with your help and consideration a buyout option that will immediately save millions. Buyout options are a tool that corporate America uses to lower the cost as it permits, as it pertains to labor. On many occasions, governmental agencies don't view wages and benefits and its long-term effects on their financial stability. The City of Brownsville is in a situation where our labor costs are capitulating due to the tenure status of our workforce. My intent during this presentation is to explain the positives and the negatives of a buyout proposal. Along with the negatives and the positives, I will explain the calculations which are open for suggestion. It is my goal that these ideas and concepts will be well-understood and informative. And thank you in advance for your time. The City of Brownsville along with PUP has 128 employees with 25 or more years of service. These employees are in a specific category where their wages and benefits, benefit packages are very costly. By offering a buyout package, we will be able to replace these positions at a fraction of the current cost. If the City of Brownsville was to continue on this current financial track, it would ultimately increase our current crisis. As stated, there are numerous employees for which our current pay benefits rates are extremely high. The paid benefit package are crippling the city's budget. Many of these individuals are ready and willing to retire. This is the perfect time to implement this plan and take control of this situation. There are currently 128 employees with 25 or more years of experience in the city and PUP. The total cost to maintain these employees follows $11,27,058 annually. Fundamentally, it would take three to six years to replace these employees. This has an added benefit of saving 100% the current high-paid benefit packages that the city is already paying for. In the first five months, we will return the investment and save the city money once a buyout is approved. By making a decision to buy out current tenured employees, we in turn have opened the gates for opportunities for the next generation. For example, if 128 employees were to accept this buyout, 128 people are retired in the community at no continued cost to the city. This buyout would increase, would create 128 new jobs in a city which is lacking in employment opportunities. These new employment opportunities will be at a lower cost due to the lack of tenure and salary adjustments that will be made. The worksheets, I did not show the employees, but if you go and show some of the salaries. Like the first one there, you have the salary, the salary that's $144,000 for a commander and $717.40. His base pay is $127,104. And that's what it would cost to replace the retired employee. So you would have a savings of $17,000. And the cost, and this is arbitrary number, the $40,000, that's the cost to retire the employee, the incentive to get him to retire. That's $40,000 plus his insurance. Buyout two, the plan two, would be if he wants to have his wife on the insurance. So it would be half the amount. It would be $20,000 and he would have, be able to have his wife insured also and the city would pay for it. Okay? If you go down like four employees, you have a patrolman that's making $105,000. $255.44. This is based on the years that he's been there. Okay? So to replace this patrolman, his base pay would be $52,000 in the next column. That's what a patrolman's base pay would be. That would be a savings to the city of $52,777.40. And if you go down the list of all the employees and add up all the savings, if you go to the last worksheet, please. You didn't go sheet by sheet, but go to the last worksheet. We blocked out the names. If you go to the last worksheet, there you go. You'll see where it's costing right now to keep those employees at $11,3452. If we were to immediately hire these employees, which is not gonna happen, it would cost us $8,992.52. It'll take three to five years to fill these positions. So you would have 100% savings in some of these positions. But let's say if you were to hire 125 employees the next day, you would still save immediately $3 million. And you would create new jobs. You would have people moving up in the ranks. And this is an optional. This is very optional. It's not mandatory. Those employees that wanna stay can stay. Let's go to the next slide, please. Go to the next slide. As stated, the current pay benefit scale for tenured employees is very high. The far-left column shows the current amount to maintain these employees, which I just showed you. The second column is the replacement cost for that position. In most cases, there is a significant difference. Go to the next slide. And the graph shows it right here. How, as you, as you would be replacing the employees and how much would be saved. Go to the next one. Clearly, the first year alone has a potential savings of $8.5 million. This is a conservative estimate. This proposal is formatted into two options, which will be referred to as Option 1A and Option 2A. And as I explained, Option 1A assumes that the tenured employee will not want an insurance plus one option. This would be a cash package with no additional benefits other than their employee insurance. A cash out payment determined by the current wages, not including benefits. These employees are still entitled to their sick leave, their vacation pay, and so on. And you would refer to the worksheet for examples. This calculation only takes into consideration the wages of the individual and not including the benefits. The employee would receive one-half of the cash payout amount and receive the plus-one insurance package. Now, that half can be changed. No, I mean, the incentive, the upfront for him to retire, the $40,000 or whatever it is that the number is based on his position, like we showed you on the worksheet, $40,000, that's an arbitrary number. That's for management to come up and decide what number would work best. But this is just the example to go by. Go to the next slide. The negatives of a buyout. We would lose experienced personnel. And we would go through a manpower shortage. But it does reduce the payroll. It opens opportunities for younger generation. It secures long-term financial stability. And it opens up capital for more projects. We can do a bond program. And we can finance some of the things that we would like to do, like the museums, the zoo, do some upgrades, pave some streets with the savings. It just makes sense. One of the things that concerns me is the, for instance, the area maintenance fee that you give on your PUP bill. It's dumped into the general fund and used in many ways. Or the hotel motel tax that is dumped into the general fund and is used for the event center, stuff like that. With the savings, we could, we could replace those funds and segregate the current area maintenance fee where the area maintenance fee is not dumped into the general fund and used for other things, but it's used for maintaining streets or paving streets. That fee that you'd be paying every month on the, on the, on the PUP bill with the savings. That'll give us the opportunity to correct some of the past mistakes we've made by dumping all these, all these funds into the general fund. Go on to the next one. The numbers and the analysis provided clearly explains the clear and concise benefits of a buyout. Buyout. I propose that this buyout be implemented immediately and let's start saving money for our future. I propose that this buyout be completed by our next fiscal year budget, which is December 1st, 2011. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I think it's something worth considering, considering that we've been borrowing, we've been taking grants from PUP to balance the budget. PUP's not gonna give us any more money to balance the budget. We have contractual obligations with civil service that we don't have the funds to meet those contractual obligations in the future. And we gotta do something. Our revenues have dropped. And until that's corrected, we're gonna be in a deficit. And this is something for us to think about and work on, hopefully to balance the budget. Thank you very much. Next item is Commissioner's report. Commissioner Atkinson.
Yeah, I just wanna let people know in my district, we've been picking up a lot of brush. Also, I wanna thank some of the people who reeled this hole that have reached out and helped maintain the streets over there. Reeled this hole, we repaved mostly all the streets in Real de Sol. Put over $3 million in the last, what, two years, Charlie? Three years?
Yes, sir.
Put about $3 million worth of repaved streets in Real de Sol. And I wanna thank Public Works and the, and the city staff for getting this done. Another issue I wanna talk about is this Flight From Theta. Flight, in my district, the airport and the Port of Brownsville land in my district. So I have been involved in this Flight From Theta project. I understand Commissioner Samora sits on the Brownsville Airport Advisory Board. And I'm sure she does a great job there. But I wanna, I wanna let people know out there, especially the people at home that aren't able to come to this meeting, on how it came about and where we, where we going with it and how it still can be a salvageable thing. First of all, three months ago after the Super Bowl, an investor came to Brownsville, brought by a person who, who has been living in Dallas and in Brownsville. He brought this individual, Public Charters, and talked about the need for airline service from Brownsville to Monterey, Brownsville to Tampico. This man owns a few planes. He owns a 30-seat plane. And he wanted to sit down with the city staff. My job as a commissioner was to take him to Larry Brown. I took him to Larry Brown. I said, "Can we get this done?" And then with that, I left him in the hands of Larry Brown. And from there, and this was three months ago. And they talked and they deliberated. And you gotta understand, this person was in a conference three years ago or two and a half years ago where Larry Brown, people think that, "Oh, why didn't you go out for bid on this project?" Well, this is the way it works when it comes to airlines and the way it's been in Brownsville. Our city staff goes to conferences every year. And last, for the last 15 years, 10 years, have been going to these conferences and trying to attract airlines to provide this service from Brownsville to Monterey. It hasn't happened. It hasn't happened in the last 10, 15 years. But every year, we spend money on our airport staff to go to these conferences and try to lure airlines here through incentives. That's the way it worked and that's the way it's always worked. As far as the bid process, it's been basically an open bid for the last 10 years. Anybody could come in and try to get incentives for, for, to be, to, to, for this airline to take off. Anyway, they sat down with Larry Brown. And from Larry Brown, after they had many meetings, it goes to the Airport Advisory, Airport Advisory Board, which is, how many people are in there? 15? There's about 15 people on that board and they're all community servants of the city. They met on this project. A presentation was given to them on open forum. Anybody could have been there. They met in open forum and the presentation was done. At the end of it all, they voted unanimously to pass Flight From Theta to be a viable project for the City of Brownsville. The next step was to go to BDC and GBIK, which it did. Which it did. It went through BDC and they, and they passed something to GBIK. GBIK had a meeting and a presentation. During the presentation, our GBIK and BDC director, Jason Hiltz, stood up in front of everybody and said, "Hey, these, this company, which is Public Charters and Public Transport, they merged together to form a company named Flight From Theta." They're an existing company, by the way. They do business currently in the northern eastern part of the United States. Anyway, at that meeting, the whole presentation was done. Larry Brown did a fabulous presentation and he, he made a point to stand up Jason Hiltz from the GBIK and BDC. And they stood up. And he said, "You know what? This company is a squeaky-clean company." They're, they're currently existing, they've, they've been vetted through TSA, through FAA, the Department of Traffic, Transportation. Why? Because they're currently doing what they're doing in the upper part of the United States. They're already flying people to Mexico. So Jason Hiltz felt, "Hey, they're already been vetted through the federal government." So they passed it unanimously. Nobody went around GBIK. Nobody went through around BDC. It went straight through GBIK. And they all voted unanimously to fund the $250,000 and the, and the incentives up to $1 million. So the next part was to come to the city. They came to the city and yes, commissioners had some, some concerns. So GBIK had to retract and said, "You know what? We feel they've been vetted, but we can take them through a process if you wanna take them through a process." Some of the commissioners felt comfortable with taking them through a process. "That's fine. I have no problem with them going through a process." During this process, there was, this, this vetting process was complete. It was complete on BDC's side. It was complete on BDC's side, but not on Fly from Theta's side. There were so many documents missing, which caused it to get a bad rating. So their attitude about it was, "We have landing permits." You know, there was an issue in this vetting report that said that they didn't have permits. Well, the permits were offered to GBIK and BDC. They just weren't accepted and put into the proposal. And then a question came about their financial stability. Well, Jim Gallagher, the owner of Fly from Theta, he's a multimillionaire. He's worth over four million dollars. His company itself was, you know business and how Donald Trump works his businesses? He doesn't put all his money into his businesses. He puts it on the side and uses his businesses to run the way they run. Has he filed bankruptcy before? Yeah, Donald Trump has. But do people still do business with Donald Trump? Yes, they do. Why? Because he's worth a lot, and he has a lot of assets. Well, this guy does too. This guy has a lot of assets. He's worth over four million dollars. And he came to the table and said, "Look," and he talked to Charlie Kavler, and he said, "Look, I'm willing to put a million dollars of my own money into a bond to guarantee that I'm not going to get up and run. Or we can even do something where we can recapture the funds and pay the city back." There's so many negotiations still going on with this, that I think it's in the city's best interest to try to get something done. I urge the city manager, Larry Brown, to meet with these people and see what they can come up with. They're not a made-up company. They're not a startup company. They've been doing business for over five to ten years. So it is still a good... I understand that right now, this project is being put through during election time. Some commissioners want to touch it, some commissioners don't want to touch it. Maybe new leadership is needed on this commission. But bottom line is, we have something in front of us that can spark economic growth. Revitalizing downtown won't happen unless we have new monies coming into our city. It's plain and simple. The average salary in Brownsville is sixteen thousand dollars. You see our people going to sustain downtown if we try to revitalize it? It's not going to happen unless we bring new people into our city to spend money. The hotelier people know this. The business people of Brownsville know it. The restaurant people in Brownsville know it. They all know it's a good project. It's a great project. But I don't think, you know, people should just want to come and just kill something. I understand some people have their concerns about it, but they're looking from the outside in. They don't get to see a lot that we get to see. A lot of it's confidential. So you're not going to see a lot of... Bottom line, this is a viable project. You know, you asked us to be commissioners so we could bring stuff to the table, so we can spark job creation, spark economic growth. This is a big deal for Brownsville. And to have certain people come in and say they don't want it, that's fine. But they don't represent Brownsville and the business community or the hoteliers. They have a voice, and they're right there, I understand. And they have a right to their opinions. But you got to look at the whole deal. And not kill a deal just because Charlie Atkinson brought it to the table, or Padma Mala brought it to the table, or Melissa Samora brought it to the table. We shouldn't be about politics when it's a project that can be something that's great for our city. You know, our businesses are hurting. Our restaurants are hurting. Our hotels are hurting desperately. And how do we get new monies in? Is by providing a service like this. There's still a viable, this is still a viable project that I hope. Maybe we can change the... Maybe I need to reach out to commissioners more. Maybe we need to bring them aboard to the table and say, "Look, maybe they didn't have all this, but they have this." And maybe the incentives they wanted was the same as Continental, was the same as American Airlines. They're just following a routine of contracts that have been done through the city of Brownsville over the last twenty years. Continental and American Airlines. They were using the same shell of a contract. Well, our city attorney has gone to hold his contract and tightened the screws to it, and has put a lot of language in there that protects the city a hundred percent. And these people know that, but they're still willing to be a part of this city and wanting to provide this service. What it would mean to an investor, and I used to work immigration. I know there's these e-visas going around, where they're asking investors to invest over five-hundred thousand in our city. There's a lot of people paying for these e-visas right now. Why are they going to San Antonio, and why are they going to Houston? Because it's a direct flight for these Mexican investors who live in Monterey and Tampico. It's a straight shot. They don't want to deal with going to Houston, back to Brownsville. That's an eight-hundred-dollar-a-shot. Where Fly from Theta would have offered a hundred-and-thirty dollars to fly one-way, two-hundred-and-sixty dollars both ways. You know what that would mean to a Mexican investor from Monterey or Tampico that would come in, invest dollars in our city? That's the end game. The end game is, where are we going to get potential investors? You know, everybody knows there's a need right now. McAllen got where they were thirty, forty years ago because they created that Atopista, that direct highway from Monterey to McAllen. That highway doesn't exist anymore because of the violence and the zetas. So everybody's searching for a way to get to the United States to buy and do what they do. Brownsville can be the first city to provide this straight shot through the air. And we need to take advantage of that. That's just plain economics. Our UTB professors redid, revised the potential of business coming from there, and it's off the charts. The vetting process report stated that. Hey, the time's now to get something going and to put Brownsville on the map. Because all the statistics are there to show that it could be a great project. But it shouldn't be about politics. It should be what's in the best interest. And I know Larry Brown, and most of you know Larry Brown. He's a very conservative director. And for him to advocate for something that he knew in his heart was going to work, and it's a viable project, then that's something that we should stand up and protect and back him up. And yeah, maybe the deal needs tweaking. But I don't care who brought this project to the table from the beginning. You know, bottom line is, we got to look at the merits of this project. And look at it and say, "Okay, look, you know, why did they get bad scores?" They got bad scores because a lot of the information wasn't in the report. They got bad scores because some of their assets was in the personal assets of four million dollars. I mean, we can tweak all that if we get back to the table, and maybe has to go past the selection. Who cares? All I know is that this is a great project, that we need to show leadership to get this for our businessmen and our community of Brownsville, because we're yearning for job creation. You know, of a Mexican investor, all he had to do was fly forty minutes instead of fly all the way to San Antonio, Houston. They're going to move their business. Businesses are going to stay in Mexico. They need just to come and go.
Commissioner, how much more time do you need?
Let's see, I mean, that's the way... All I'm saying is, please, if, for those of you who think this is a viable project and still want us to maintain due diligence on trying to get this done, I urge commissioners to just look at the merits of what's going on and tweak it. If we need to drop the incentives and make them come to the table with more, then we'll do it. But don't kill something just because it's politics, season time, and it's not good right now. Because that's not what we should be about. The second issue I got to talk about is our city employees. And my stance on, a lot of city employees live in my district, and they have asked, "What's going on? Why have we not gotten a raise in seven years?" Our city employees have not gotten a raise in seven years. When I took over as the city commissioner, everybody knows I'm an advocate for unions. I back up the fire and police. Our fire is the third or fifth highest-paid firefighters in the state of Texas. For somebody to tell us that we're not taking care of our fire police, they're out of control, because that's not true. Our police, you saw the numbers of how many officers were getting paid that much. We're taking care of our police, and we're taking care of our fire. And we've always given the police and fire what they wanted. Well, I took the stats and said, "You know what? We got to take care of our city employees. These people sitting right there that haven't had a raise in seven years. The people behind you that just eat it every year because they get bypassed by raises." My attitude and the way I think with a union is, we took care of police, we took care of fire, let's take care of the city employees. The only way to give the city employees a raise is if we get a letter from the firefighters that say they want me to a clause. The firefighters have a me-too clause in their contract that says, "If you pay police or the city employees, you have to pay me." And that's where we've gone out of control with these salaries, is because we have to pay fire every time we pay city employees. That's why we've been afraid to get the city employees a raise in seven years, because we can probably afford to pay the city employees, but we can't afford to pay the firemen an extra raise. So that's where we're at. So a lot of people want to know, what's the deal with not giving the city employees a raise? I think all of us here, none of us is going to question what I'm telling you right now, because it's the truth. You know, we have to give our city employees a quality-of-life raise. The money you're making right now, Stella, all y'all back there, six years ago, you were making six thousand dollars more, seven years ago. Because of inflation and the way things are, you're making six thousand dollars less as of right now, without getting your raises. And that's what makes me passionate about, "Hey, look, we've taken care of police-fire. It's time to take care of these." What I did is ask the fire for a letter saying they would not me-too a raise that we gave the city employees. And for that, I got blasted. "Oh, my God, you know, you don't care about firemen." I do care about firemen. But I'm not in the position just to care about one person or one group. I got to take care of everybody. So I don't mind being blasted on certain things by the firemen. I don't mind. I support them. I want the best for them, and I think they get the best. I think they've proven in their salaries that they're one of the highest paid. So we're not against... I'm not against the fire. But I got to tell you where my stance is. I can't be a good commissioner if I'm going to cave in to a certain group's demands every time it's election time. I can't do it, and I won't do it. I'd rather lose my raise than succumb to peer pressure on why we're not giving certain groups a raise. Because you know what? Our city employees have not gotten a raise, and they're all back there. Look at them. All the city staff, they come here on their own time, and they haven't had a raise in seven years. I'm surprised they even want to keep working at our city. But something has to be done. We haven't raised taxes in eighteen years. And I commend the commission here. Anthony, he's leaving. In four years he's been here, he's not raised taxes. We haven't raised taxes, and we haven't raised your rate at PUB. All right? I'm going to let you all know right now. Eighteen years we have not raised taxes in the city of Brownsville. Now, did your property tax go up? That's the state of Texas that we get blamed for. We get blamed for when the state raises your property taxes. You blame the city, but it's not the city of Brownsville. We've been working with the same tax base for eighteen years. Eighteen years, we have not raised your taxes. And we have not raised the PUB rates. People want to throw it out there, "Oh, the city commission," right away. I mean, they want to throw out. But I'm here to defend, not just myself, but everybody here. We have not raised taxes in eighteen years. We have not raised rates in the four words, commissioners. But I need my constituents to know, and everybody in Brownsville to know that, we are taking care of your back. And we want more for our city employees, we want more for Brownsville, but it has to come with a price. And that's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. I forgot two little items from my report. If it's okay, I'll just include it. The cost on the buyout, based on the numbers I put out, it's almost a million and a half. That would be recouped in about five, six months. The potential savings to the city, long-term, is about twenty million dollars. So stop and think about that. That would keep your taxes from going up. And that's what y'all want. And that would also allow us to give the employees an increase where needed. Now, one thing I wanted to mention on the Fly from Theta very briefly. When Fly from Theta came, I just told them they needed to go through the process. That's all I did. Now, it failed. We need to move on. But we welcome, I do. We welcome any company that can provide the service, because I think there's no doubt about it that it is needed. We have an international airport, and we don't have international flights. I personally thought Fly from Theta was doable, and it would work out. Unfortunately, it didn't. But we need to move on, and we hope that we can get another airline that will submit a proposal that we don't have to wait for twenty years. That's my position on that. Let's go on to the... Before we do the proclamation, if it's okay with the commission, are the Filipino singers here?
Yes, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this was not on the agenda, but I asked mayor and I asked city management if we could do this. Last night, I was blessed to be invited by my very good friends of the Filipino-American Association to a concert that they had. And this is something that I'll probably be pursuing in the future to bring back to our community, because I was able to witness, as were many members of our community. But I believe that this is something which you will witness in just a couple of minutes. This is something, as a musician, I'll tell you that I have never witnessed anything like what I witnessed last night. These people are truly, truly a blessing of God. And we invited them here today because we're very honored in the city of Brownsville to have them here. Thank you choir director. And I'd like to introduce at this time, the Filipino... Oh, my God, no, I went nervous.
Madrigal.
The Madrigal singers. And if you all would please join us in the front. And I would thank you for your presence here. Thank you for being here.
Please come forward.
David and all of the choir, please join us.
If you all will stand directly in front, facing out.
Hi, how you doing? Good to see you. Thank you for honoring us here.
Thank you.
A pleasant evening to everyone. Let me give a brief introduction of the Philippine Magical Singers. The University of the Philippines Magical Singers was organized in nineteen sixty-three by a national artist, Professor Andrea Veneracion. The group is composed of students, faculty, and alumni from the different colleges of the University of the Philippines. The choir is one of Asia's most awarded, having consistently won all the top prizes in most of the world's most prestigious choral competitions in Italy, Germany, Austria, Switzerland, France, Bulgaria, Hungary, and Spain. They hold the distinction of being the first choir in the world to win the European Grand Prix of Choral Singing twice. In nineteen ninety-seven, and more recently in two thousand and seven. The ensemble performs a wide repertoire of various styles and forms. Renaissance music, classical music, Filipino and international folk songs, contemporary and avant-garde music, opera, and even popular music. Their specialization and focus in the magical idiom has inspired their unique setup of singing while seated in a semicircle without a conductor. The UP Magical Singers also maintain an active outreach and concert tour schedule, performing in far-flung areas of the Philippines seldom reached by choral artists. With an average of two overseas concert tours in a year, the UP Magical Singers is the country's most active ambassadors of goodwill, and perhaps also one of the most well-traveled choirs. More recently, the group was honored by the United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization as Artists for Peace, for putting their fame and influence at the service of UNESCO's ideals and efforts to promote cultural diversity, intercultural dialogue, and a culture of peace. Similarly, the group has been honored with a Gideonium Award in two thousand and ten of September by the Concours Polifonico Giro de Arezzo Foundation for the artistic and choral promotion activity that they carried out after they won the European Grand Prix for Choral Singing in two thousand and seven. Thus, are grateful for all that the Philippine Magical Singers have done for the choral world. So ladies and gentlemen, it is with great pride that I introduce to you the Philippine Magical Singers.
Awesome. You want to sing again or you want to sing another day?
Do one more.
That's it, one more?
One more.
One more?
(Singing) I dream that someday our wishes somehow soon come true and last forever. I dream that someday our songs in some way will bring our love and love and joy. I see this one day when all the world will hear us. That someday when all stand before us singing one song together. And we are gonna love you, we are gonna respect you, we are gonna make you a better world, we will respect you, we will love you. I dream that someday our wishes somehow fill the earth forever. I dream that someday our wishes will come true and last forever. I dream that someday our songs in some way will bring our love and love and joy. I see this one day when all the world will hear us. That someday when all stand before us singing one song together. And we are gonna love you, we are gonna respect you, we are gonna make you a better world, we will respect you, we will love you. We are gonna love you, we are gonna make you a better world, we will respect you, we will love you. We are gonna make you a better world. We will make you a better world.
Thank you so much, thank you, thank you. Thank you. God bless all of you. Thank you. What a treat. What a treat. I think this is the best meeting I've conducted since I started four years ago.
Mayor, like I told you earlier, uh, I'm in works right now with the Filipino American Association so that we can work, uh, I know that I'm gonna be fundraising for it. I've already committed to the fundraising efforts so that we can bring them back and I'd like to offer a free show for the community so that everybody can come free of, free of charge so that they can be able to witness this firsthand.
That's great, that's great. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. Okay, we have proclamations. Reverend Pasquale Lenzie, Lenece, Lenece, would you please come forward? I hope I pronounced it right. If I'm not correct.
This is a, a very great honor for me. And I want to thank Father Lenece for being here tonight and we have a, a proclamation for Father Lenece to honor him. And, um, he has exemplified patience, humor, and grace. And it is just an honor to have him and his family. His brother is here, some of the members of the Immaculate Conception Parish are here as well. And I'd like to, um, read this proclamation. And this is a, a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing Father Pasquale Lenece, O M I, for his dedication to our community and to the Immaculate Conception Cathedral. Whereas Father Pasquale Lenece, oblate of Mary Immaculate, was born on March 26, 1929 in Ripa Limossani, near Naples, Italy, and came to the seminary and the oblate of Mary Immaculate at the age of 11, studying in Florence and Torino in Italy. And whereas Father Tanskovich, a Texas priest, a member of the oblate of Mary Immaculate, traveled to Italy in 1950, seeking priests to serve South Texas. And whereas a young Pasquale Lenece, at the urging of his mother, Asomta Lenece, obtained a papal dispensa- dispensation by Pope Pius XII, allowing him to be ordained a priest at his hometown of Ripa Limossani, Italy, prior to completing seminary. And he was sent to South Texas within days of being ordained. And whereas at the age of 23, Father Lenece came to South Texas, not knowing Spanish or English, with five other priests recruited by Father Taniskovich. And during the last 58 years, has served as an assistant pastor and pastor of several local churches, including the Immaculate Conception Cathedral. And whereas throughout his years of service, he has worked to serve our community, the people of South Texas, and to maintain and restore the Immaculate Conception Cathedral, which is not only a place of worship and the seat of the diocese of Brownsville, but a national historic site within our community. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the city of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the charter of said city, do hereby recognize Father Pasquale Lenece, O M I, for his dedication to our community and to the Immaculate Conception Cathedral, done on this, the third day of May, 2011. Signed, Mayor Pat M. Almada Jr. and the rest of the city commission. Father, thank you.
Really, you made tonight feel me so little, but remember, my heart remain bigger, it's even bigger tonight for so many reasons. And one special reason, because I came over to this beautiful land, United States, Texas. I was just 23 years old. Since then, I had to learn Spanish, I had to learn English, and I didn't forget Italian though, eh? So I feel so, um, blessed by God. For it's, because God has been so good to me. So, uh, I must say that Texas occupy the special place in my heart. I start my ministry here in Texas, in Italian. I was 23 years old. I finished my study in San Antonio. I had to learn English, to learn Spanish, but I did forget Italian, okay? So I feel blessed by God. And I feel that God loved me in a special way and I'm proud to be here. I hope God gives me many more years to keep working with you people, noble people, really, noble people blessed by God. So thank you very much. Thank you.
(Applause)
It's a great honor and pleasure to interview Ricardo Cepillín inside this school, this well-known in the arts of the time, a college star in Mexico and internationally. Please help me welcome Cepillín and his family who accompanied him here. Ricardo Gonzalez Guajardo, his uncle, his nephew, his brother, his sister, his wife, his son, his daughter, his nephew, his sister, his brother, his sister, his brother, his nephew, his brother, his sister, 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 his brother, his[1729.13]
And he was, he was very, very adoptive and successful at that. Uh, burglary detail, municipal court operations, training division, uh, community affairs, uh, and received many commendations in each and one, each and every, uh, division that he was assigned to. Uh, the last few decades, I would say, Ray has been working, uh, with the community, uh, as a coordinator in the department's community and youth programs. And, uh, when we, uh, Chief Garcia saw his talents in relation to communicating with, with the public and, and being able to, uh, gather, uh, resources, he was one of the main person, people that we had out there, uh, generating funds for the, uh, Christmas for Kids giveaway, which has evolved into, you know, as you know, a big event yearly. And where we, he has probably helped us, uh, with donations that have helped millions of our children throughout the years. Uh, we, we were bringing up, uh, retirement possibilities and Ray, I think, has informed us that he will retire very soon and will leave us-
Wait for the buyout. Don't retire before then.
Well, he might have changed his mind after your presentation, but he is leaving us and it's, uh, to us, it's, uh, to us, it's, uh, it's bittersweet, obviously. His family is very happy and Cindy, his wife, worked at, at the police station for many, many years as well. Uh, it's time flies, as you can see her, two children, their two children have actually grown. Uh, so, a great friend, uh, a great community leader. He has been a tremendous asset to our, to our city, not only as a police officer, but being able to adopt to many other responsibilities and gathering info, gathering all the, all the resources, financial resources, to create a dream back then, which was, uh, helping our youth and helping, well, with the Christmas, uh, for toys giveaway. So Ray, congratulations, congratulations to your family, congra- thank you for the, the service you have provided our city. And of course, he is, uh, eligible for the employee of the year, uh, which we, is awarded at our banquet. And, uh, he's so resourceful, he'll probably take us to him. So, thank you, Ray, and God bless. Not a saddle, but you get a watch. And the, oh, sure, you get, Officer Remundo Ariano Junior, employee of the month for May 2011. Thank you, Ray. Take over.
This, this was an honor.
Is it better?
Basic commission.
Commission. There we go. Okay, now you know why they call me grandpa? Now, once the other commissioners, uh, I want to say thank you so much. It was an honor, really, it really was. And I want to say thank you so much. And chief, thank you so much.
I think it's the other way around, uh, Officer Ray. We thank you for your service and you honor us by being here. Thank you, thank you very much. Our best wishes to you and your family. But if I were you, I would not retire tomorrow, okay? Okay, uh, I already did my presentation under the mayor's report. We have consent agenda items.
Consent agenda items, A through L.
Moved approved.
We have a motion approved and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moving along to, um, boards and commissions.
Item six, consideration and action to appoint three citizens to the Brownsville Citizens Advisory Committee.
Ben, I think I get two appointments, right?
Yes, Mayor, you have two appointments, Commissioner Atkinson has one.
Commissioner Atkinson, do you have appointment?
No, right now, can I, do you need it pretty quick, right? By the next meeting, we'll be okay or no?
Yes, or if you can name somebody-
Yeah, well, I, I will name somebody within the next two, three days and I'll call your office.
Why don't you defer to me, I'll name it for you?
No, somebody, somebody's getting, somebody's getting their application and I just, I just need to get, make sure I get it.
You can, you can make a motion pending application.
Yeah, but there's two people that want it, so I'm just talking to both of them right now.
Well, the mayor has two.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Um, the, the only thing I don't want is a conflict for Mrs. Martinez because they own the Hotel Hardin.
Mayor, it's your call, I mean, it's not a conflict, but, but-
There's no conflict there? Okay. Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll name her, you have her name?
Um.
Ulo Martinez's wife?
Yes.
Okay.
And Alma Garcia you mentioned.
And Alma Garcia, okay. Uh, subject to them turning in their application, okay?
Second.
Do we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, okay? Uh, and we're gonna put, postpone the other until the next meeting. Public comment, we have one-
Item eight.
Item eight, I'm sorry.
Consideration and action to acknowledge the deputy city manager CFO's financial statements and cash investment report for the city of Brownsville for the second quarter ending March 31st, 2011.
I don't know, mayor members of the city commission, this is our six, six-month report for the quarter, second quarter ending March 31st of this fiscal year. The, uh, there are obviously some concerns, uh, for the remainder of the fiscal year. We all know that the state is, uh, expected to reduce some of its allocations, not only to, to the school district and to the university, but also to the city. And obviously, this is going to have an impact on, on our economy, uh, as, as to, uh, sales tax, revenues, or, or maybe possibly, uh, unemployment. And we are facing, uh, continuing rise in oil and gas prices.
Pete, the commissioner pointed out, are we supposed to acknowledge your calendar first? No?
What, what was the first, calendar?
It's the statements and cash investment report.
Yeah. And then follows the, uh, the calendar.
I think that the, uh, wrong information is attached to your agenda request.
I got here to acknowledge the deputy city manager's financial statements and cash investment report, that's what I have.
I have a completely different-
I have a consideration and action to acknowledge the fiscal year 2012 budget planning calendar.
That's what I have.
Okay, so, the chairman has the jet. We'll go by this one. Go, go ahead.
What line item do we go? Agenda. We continue with the, uh, financials or?
Just go ahead and do the financial statement.
Sorry, Pete, we just have different agendas.
Let's just go by the way it's here, okay? Go ahead, we'll do, we'll do the other.
Obviously, continuing, there's also a decline in our, uh, bridge funds. Uh, we estimate about 500,000. Uh, we are gonna make some of it, some of it with the sales tax. Uh, sales tax is gonna be about 300,000 over, but our bridge, uh, revenues are gonna be down 500. And again, we're still gonna experience a, the tax roll to be flat or note growth. Um, what's critical here is the unemployment rate, it's still high. Uh, the average unemployment through March of this fiscal year or calendar year, uh, was 12.8. Uh, it was 6.1 in 2007, so there's a huge, uh, decline or increase, rather, in unemployment between a very few, uh, few years. Um, uh, the sales tax, uh, right now, we are at 3.64% above, uh, last fiscal year. If we, if we run the numbers between now and the end of the fiscal year, we should have approximately, approximately $30,000 more than, than what's in the budget. Uh, again, this is a, uh, a chart of the sales tax, uh, the main, the, the, the top, top year was 2008, which went over 25 million, uh, went down in 2009, 2010. That's because of the, uh, current recession we are picking up in 2011. The, uh, this shows the, uh, unemployment rates going back to 90, all the way to, uh, the last three months of, of this calendar year. Uh, these are the bridge revenues. Uh, we have, uh, a decline from last year of 29%, and as far as budget, we're down 41%. So that's a huge decrease, uh, as you can see on this chart, 2006 was our best year, uh, 2011, we estimate around 1.2 million. Again, a decrease from 2010. The, uh, building permits, so we're at, experiencing a, a 9% growth right now. Uh, some of this 9% includes, uh, uh, non-taxable, uh, entities such as the university and the school district. Uh, again, the, uh, this is the chart of the building permits for various years, all the way going back from 2000. Uh, the tax rolls, uh, were, were flat in 2009, 2010, uh, 2011, very, very little growth. Uh, debt that has been issued, um, we did not issue any debt in 2009, 2010. Uh, so far, we've issued two, a little over 2 million in 2011. The, uh, as far as debt, uh, the total amount is 153 million, uh, but 10,555 is self-funded from various agencies like Paseo and La Resaca, uh, CDBG, BCIC, and JIBIC. Uh, these are the tax rates that the city has maintained for several years. Uh, it's been pretty, pretty steady at 65 cents. Uh, fund balance, uh, we had a very strong year in 2000, uh, 2008 and 2006. We are seeing a, a decline, 2009, 2010, uh, estimated at the end of 2011 would be around 10 million. Uh, these are the, uh, again, summary of the, of the fund balances, uh, uh, for, for various years, uh, and, uh, again-
Go back, go back to previously? Okay.
The, uh, this is, uh, more or less what our reserves are. We, we did maintain in 2010, uh, a, a reserve of about 15%. Uh, that number obviously is gonna decline in 2011. This is the general fund, uh, revenues, and if you noticed, at the very bottom of that schedule, uh, beginning with, uh, uh, city savings from PUB not charged and utility services, obviously, that did not go through, that 617,000, 160,000, 459,000, all related to PUB, that, uh, those, uh, items were budgeted in 2011, but, uh, were never approved. So, uh, we are obviously gonna see a decline in, in those estimated revenues. Uh, expenditures, uh, we're at, uh, 48%, we're supposed to be at 50%, so we are within our, maintaining, uh, our expenses, uh, uh, to go along with the, with the budget. Again, the first column, uh, in that particular schedule shows the ending, ending fund balance. Uh, I have March, but it should be September 30th, 2011, 9.7 million. Uh, this is just the balance sheet of the general fund. At the end of, uh, of the quarter, uh, our fund balance is now 17,497,514. That number will decline because most of the revenue, most of the property taxes has already been collected. As we move forward to the end of the year, that, that number will decline. Uh, again, uh, the, uh, estimated fund balance around 10 million or 9.8 million, we have a, a reserve of about 10%. Uh, again, 17,497 through, through March. Convention and tourism, this is a, a fund, uh, I want to make sure we, we understand how, that the event center is recorded in this fund, but the event center also generates revenues. And any shortfall from the event center, it is, it is, it is, uh, it is paid by the general fund, so in, in reality, none of the funds that are, are spent for the event center are from hotel motel tax. It's either money that the event center generates and any shortfall that they have gets a subsidy by the, by the general fund. Uh, community development fund, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go very, very quick here on some of the funds. Uh, this is the federal monies, uh, money's coming in, money's being spent. Uh, non-bundled debt, 11,638. Uh, the debt service, uh, we have a, a fund balance of 12,497, but we will be making payments in August for some interest, and, uh, we estimate that the fund balance at this, at this particular, by the time the year ends, will be around $3 million. This is streetscape, this is a fund that is for downtown area. Uh, we have, uh, at the end of March, 482,000 dollars. And this, this is a fund that, uh, generate monies through, uh, assessments during our, the streetscape project that was done several years ago, and this is money that's still in the bank that, that we need to spend, and we'll probably be spending in the downtown areas, especially cleaning up some of the sidewalks. Landfill tipping fee, a fund balance at the end of, uh, uh, March, 839,000. Airport, uh, airport, again, it looks like it's gonna need a subsidy between now and the, and the end of the fiscal year. Uh, again, this is the bridge fund, which I've already covered. Uh, border vehicle parking system fund, right now, it's, uh, uh, down 16,000 between revenues and expenditures. Transit system, uh, net loss of 1,624. Again, the federal, federal government picks up one half of that, 812,406, and the remaining, uh, money comes from, uh, other local sources such as state of priority assistance and general fund transfer. Uh, the golf course, uh, through, uh, March, shows, uh, expenditure exceeding revenues by 25,000. Uh, and then, as we go forward, this are all the era grants that the, uh, city has been awarded this year, uh, beginning with Fund 15. Uh, then you have the, uh, the, the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for the homeless prevention and rapid rehousing. Uh, that's, uh, a grant that, that was for 865,920. Uh, we have a, a million dollar grant from, uh, from the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, another one for 1 million. Uh, then we have, uh, one from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, again, it's a different one, 100, uh, Fund 152. Then you have Fund 153, that's the weatherization program. Uh, and then another Fund 154, again, for housing and urban development. Then you have, uh, this is a grant that hasn't been spent yet, uh, 228,655, this is for, uh, police. Uh, and there's, uh, 156, so that's for the Department of, uh, of Energy, 1,659,200. Another grant for the Department of Justice. Uh, again, that's, uh, has not been, uh, has not been received, but it's, it's, it's another Department of Justice grant for the police department. And this is another one, and this is for upgrading the, some of the radios for the police department. Uh, and again, there's another one for, uh, 100,000 dollars, again, just, justice for law enforcement grant. For the, uh, for the medical insurance, this is a, a summary of some of the years in our self-funded health insurance. We ended the year in 2010 with a 3,900,000 fund balance. As it looks so far in, for the first six months of the year, uh, we're doing, we're doing well as far as contributions and expenditures, uh, contributions exceeding expenditures by 352,000, so we have a fund balance at the end of March of 4.2 million. And again, this is the last, uh, item, and that's for the, uh, investments, uh, and comparing the period March 2010 versus, uh, March 2011. And again, the city not only invest monies for the city, but also for the BCIC, the Public Improvement District, the JIBIC, and the JIBIC. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, this is an action item. Got a motion approved? To acknowledge? We have a motion to acknowledge, can I have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item, nine?
Item nine, consideration and action to acknowledge the fiscal year 2012 budget planning calendar.
I don't know, mayor members of the city commission, we have already started the process of, of the budget, we started in April 19th. Uh, we're working right now with the, with the police and fire departments. Uh, we will be meeting with the, everybody on May 18th, all the departments, to go over the preparation of the 2012 fiscal year budget. We are expecting to have, uh, several, several meetings with, uh, with the commission. Uh, the, according to the calendar that we have, uh, already set up, we will have six days through the year, through the process, where we've been with the city commission to go over the budget. Last year, we did, uh, we, we had planned to do it in six days, uh, but as you recall, last year's budget, it took a little longer, and we had nine meetings with, with the city commission. But the, as planned right now, the, the, the budget is scheduled for approval on, on September the 12th, assuming that everything fits into place.
Uh, this is an action item?
It approved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Seven, ten?
Hold on, real quick, mayor, can we open up number six again?
Why?
Just 'cause I have somebody, uh, she confirmed. I just wanna do it now because I know they're meeting and I wanna get it over with.
You have a motion, open it up?
So moved.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. What do we have?
I want to, uh, Ben, I want to appoint, appoint Marlis Cortinas.
That's a good appointment.
Okay.
Okay. Subject to the application submitted, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Can we have a motion?
Second.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay, let's go to item, um, ten.
Item 10, consideration and action regarding financial assistance request in the amount of 20,000 dollars from the Salute to Freedom Committee for the 12, 2011 City of Brownsville, July 4th, Salute to Freedom.
Okay, here are members of the commission, as you know, Mr. Jokel is a person that really helps us out with this every year, uh, July 4th fireworks and, uh, celebration of Independence Day. Um, we're trying to, uh, identify financial resources that may assist with this. Uh, as you know, in, in the past, we've asked for 30,000, we've reduced it to 20, um, and, uh, up to 20, and we're trying to find, uh, more donations out there. Uh, however, this is an event that, uh, we have had every year, 4th of July fireworks, uh, we're trying to get it back to the Amigo Land part of the city, uh, ITech, um, and our, our request is if you want to set aside 20,000 dollars, if need be, to utilize the total sum for the 4th of July, uh, celebration.
What does this pay for, fireworks?
I'm sorry?
Does this pay for fireworks?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and we give it to one person and that's it? We don't put it out for bid or?
We can put it out for proposals, there's not very many people that know about fireworks, so-
It's an expertise.
I used to work as soft padre and I used to deal with this all the time, so I know that there are individuals out there-
Right.
-who are experts in-
This is, this is just to set the money aside, uh, and that we, we will continue with the process of identifying who would do that and things like that.
Can you have a motion?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 11?
Item 11, consideration and action to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, and installation of an interior camera surveillance system for the Brownsville multimodal facility.
I don't know, mayor, city commissioners, step recommendation is to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, and installation of an interior camera surveillance system for the Brownsville multimodal facility to American Surveillance of Brownsville, Texas for a total price of 86,924.60. Funding for this procurement will be derived from grant number TX-90-X889 in the amount of 69,539.60, which is 80% of the total project cost, and the remaining balance will be paid through local matching funds in the amount of 17,385, um, or 20% for the total project cost. The administration of the Buzz Department concurs with this recommendation.
Mr. Luna?
Yes, ma'am.
Both of these items, 11 and 12, go hand in hand, and they're being given to the same company, they're being swept, as the way I see it, under the same company. How is this possible if it totals more than 170,000 dollars?
The difference between these two projects is that, uh, they, the, the cameras on the outside, they were supposed to come over here before city commission at a later time, but because we were asked by the, by the, uh, by Spotglass, okay, to bring this also at the same time to save the city money, because right now what they're doing is that they're pulling the, the wires and the insulation on the outside. The, the interior cameras are, are supposed to be installed, uh, bef, prior to, to installing the outside cameras, so there's-
I don't think you understand what I'm asking.
I'm sorry.
Because both items 11 and 12 cite a certain statute that says that this company is the sole distributor of this type of product, software, et cetera.
The software.
And I, and I know that there are other competitors out there in Brownsville-
There's-
-in the valley, in Texas, and it just happens to be that this one company seems to be getting all the contracts for the city.
The thing is-
Under, under the same guidelines, under the same contract, without going out for RFP.
Well, to answer your question-
I wasn't done with my question.
To answer your question, it is considered a captive procurement because number one, the city already has the software installed at the police station, installed at city hall, city plaza, at the sports park, several places around the city, so we already have the license for the software, which is Milestone. That I know, uh, American Surveillance is the only distributor in this area for Milestone. I know there's a new company, uh, in, in, uh, in the valley that is trying to get also the distribution of, of Milestone, but actually, Milestone is, it's only been handled by, by American Surveillance. And they do cover the maintenance, they do cover the installation of the equipment, the warranties. Now, the difference between these two contracts is that, uh, number one, the interior cameras are supposed to be installed first, and then the exterior, the exterior cameras will, should be installed at a later time, but because we were asked by, by Spotglass, the construction manager at risk, to bring this before city commission to save the city money, because right now what they're doing is they're pulling a lot of cable through the outside walls and all- what they're doing is they're pulling a lot of cable through the outside walls and also the insulation, that's why we have, we have the, the, the exterior cameras together, I mean, um, presented before City Commission.
So when does this umbrella contract, it seems, over all these city buildings, when does it go up for RFP again?
There's gonna be an expiration to that contract, but right now, what we're dealing with is the installation of cameras, software, uh, also the, uh, the connectivity of the, of the, of the software to the rest of the, of the, of the city's, uh, network.
But the question is, when does it go, when does it open up?
Uh, I believe it's, it's coming out for renewal next year.
So it's going to include all these city facilities?
Well, the thing is, the thing is, when you have one software, okay, that, that is being used by the city, you know, it's not cost-effective to, to change a little software on the other side and then having to purchase additional, additional licenses separate from the main software, and then having to purchase also the, the servers, a separate server, you know, it's, we're trying to, to, to make it all into one. So, uh, for example, in the near future, if we need to, if we need police to have access to the multimodal facility, it's gonna be through the same software. So by, by, by having a captive vendor for, for this type of software, we don't have to, we don't have to combine two softwares or having issues, uh, uh, on two different softwares trying to communicate to each other. So under section 252.022 of the Local Government Code, it allows, uh, entities like, like this municipality to, to procure this type of, of, uh, high-technology, uh, equipment, which is software and, and, and cameras, as a captive purchase. Does that answer your question?
Any other questions?
I have a question, and this, it's not necessarily directed at Mr. Luna, but Pete, were the maintenance and operation costs for the multimodal included in your budget for, uh, next year? Under operations, so those, those costs are already included in next year's? Sure. Are the operational and maintenance costs for the new multimodal included in Pete's, uh, budget for next year?
We're gonna be including them, yes, in the budget.
What are they now? Do we have those numbers now?
We, we haven't started to work on the budget for next year yet.
For this fiscal year?
For this fiscal year, yes.
They are?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Not gonna have a motion?
Motion approved?
Motion approved? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Nay, me please.
You got one nay? Commissioner Samora? Item 12?
Item 12, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, and installation of an exterior camera system for the Brownsville multimodal facility.
Step recommendation is to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, and installation of an exterior camera surveillance system for the Brownsville multimodal facility to American Surveillance of Brownsville, Texas, for a total price of $99,198.88. Funding for this procurement will be to grant number TX-90-X889 in the amount of $79,359.10, which is 80%, and the local match, which is 20% for $19,839.78. For the to, uh, the total cost of the project, the administration of the bus department concurs with this recommendation.
Okay, this is an action item?
Any questions?
Can I have a motion?
Approved.
Second? Any discussion? Anybody have a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
You got, you listen, Samora, nay. Can I have a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Good state.
Thank you.
You listen? Ready, yay?